Welcome to the Village Board meeting for the Village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, June 22, as is the case at least until the middle of July. We are meeting remotely via Zoom. You can pick up the link for our Zoom meetings at Pleasantville-NY.gov, as well as the links for Zoom meetings of the other Village Boards and Commissions. And within a short period of time, a recorded video of our Zoom meetings is posted at PCTV76.org. So, welcome all. We just came out of an hour-long work session talking primarily about the various options for the future of the Pleasantville Pool. That work session discussion with our two pool consultants was also recorded, and that will be available at PCTV76.org as well, and is perhaps the opening chapter in what will be a series of conversations with the community about what we might do to either repair the existing pool or change it, whether it makes sense to do one or the other, what folks would like to see in a pool facility, and what everybody is willing to shoulder in the way of the costs to do it. So, I think the beginning of a good discussion, one that is complicated and difficult, difficult especially because it's potentially a very expensive project. So, I encourage everybody who's interested in the question of the pool. If you want to follow up and did not participate in that first hour, to take a look at it at PCTV76.org. But also, we're going to be posting within the next day or so, a couple of other Zoom meetings. One for Thursday night, for folks who want to comment on the Village Board's decision not to open the pool this season because of the COVID-19 pandemic. People are asking us to revisit that question. And I don't want to leave people with false hope. I think the general feeling of the Board is that the decision we made is still the right one, even though the conditions have changed in various ways. But happy to talk that through, and happy also to hear what people have to say. So, I'm going to post that for Thursday night, and then at some point, perhaps in the week or the week following or the week thereafter, we'll post for another discussion about the future of the pool, with folks having had an opportunity to take a look at the discussion we had tonight. So, a couple of other announcements to make. Obviously, the Mid-Hudson Valley, of which we're apart, is currently in Phase 2. Today is Monday, the 22nd of June. Tomorrow, Tuesday, the 23rd, our Mid-Hudson region enters Phase 3. So, the biggest change for the life of Pleasantville in Phase 3 is that restaurants are allowed to have indoor seating, maximum 50% of their capacity. I think most restaurants believe that the actual capacity will be less than that because of the requirement to maintain social distancing with tables at least six feet apart. But as many of you saw this past Saturday night, the Village Board decided to try the experiment of closing Wheeler Avenue on Saturday night from Manville Road up to the exit from the Bedford Road parking lot, right by Soul Brewing. So, in the late afternoon, we closed the street. We invited restaurants that filed for a simple permit to do it, to put seating out in the street, in the diagonal parking area or the five-minute parking area, still necessary to maintain passage through the middle so that pedestrians can pass without engaging folks without masks. I will say that I think it was a nice night overall, seemed to have been generally successful. It was relatively quiet, and some of the restaurant owners, I think, are looking at the results and trying to assess whether it worked or didn't work. One of the concerns they had was the fact that you couldn't drive down Wheeler. It might have an effect on people's capacity or interest in curbside pickup, not necessarily wanting to come downtown and walk further to make the pickup. So, we're going to reach out to everybody and see how it went. But certainly, I think the overall zenith felt good, and lots of people enjoyed themselves. Certainly, a couple of the restaurants that I have spoken to say it had been good for them, and it reflects, in the end, our desire to try to help the businesses that we all depend on, not only for the services that we're happy and proud to have, but for the vibrancy of our community. We're all in this together to try to help them recover from what has been, for most restaurants and retail, an extraordinarily difficult period of time. So, stay tuned on that. But we have a resolution tonight to extend this Saturday night closing and do it the next three Saturday nights, consistent with the experience we actually turned out to have and how the restaurant operators and restaurant goers feel about it. And Eric Morrissey, our administrator, and Eric Ressler, our police chief, would have the option of deciding that it didn't make sense to continue it if conditions changed. One of the things we don't know is how the world will be different in Phase 3 when indoor dining is permitted as well. And I can tell you, you know, for a couple of folks who said, "Oh, my God, why wouldn't all the restaurants have participated?" One of the things they all confront is trying to get back on their feet and have a business that actually can turn a profit. It's hard to make the commitment to add more staff, especially when the opportunity to have some indoor dining is about to happen. So, I think, as is true for every one of us, we're going to take it week by week, but appreciate the good spirit on Saturday night, and we'll try it again next week, and obviously tweak it in little ways each week that we do it, to respond to people's comments. Anybody else have thoughts? I know, Steve, you were down there at one point, right?
Yeah, I was down there, and I thought for the first night of us trying this, it was actually a home run. You know, it takes time for this kind of thing to get established, but the people that I saw down there were really enjoying it. I think a lot of our restaurants have to understand how they build their workflow around bringing stuff outside if they haven't had that many tables out there. So, there's obviously going to be a little back and forth as people get used to this. But the overwhelming opinions that I ran into, at least both from restaurants and from people there, was that this was really cool. And to be able to walk, you know, have Wheeler closed from that exit down to the intersection created a really cool pedestrian vibe that, in my personal opinion, we could really build on for down the road. So, I'm very happy that we're going to hopefully pass tonight the ability to extend it a few more times and really learn how it feels.
Anybody else, anything to add to that? I just wanted to throw in there that among the pieces that's important for everybody to have in mind, and I know the restaurant operators have it in mind, is that the regulations of the State Liquor Authority, which we have nothing to do with, but have some responsibility in this circumstance to try to maintain, are allowing restaurants to serve takeout liquor and to serve liquor in the public realm in ways that are not normally permitted because of the extraordinarily difficult circumstances they have confronted. But it's important to remember that the guidelines for the service of alcohol and food require that it be sold to people sitting at a table. And I think the reason for that is that the tables are required to be placed in a socially-distanced setting, and that is the determining factor that makes sure that you're not getting too many people too close. So, we will confront a problem, as will the restaurants, with the State Liquor Authority if we end up with people milling around in the middle of the street with a drink in their hands, or a burrito in their hands for that reason. But it was, I think, all around, a night that was mostly well-received and good spirit, and, as Steve said, felt like a nice night. And you start to imagine how it would look if we had little twinkly lights and a canopy above us and all of that.
Yep, exactly.
More later, stay tuned. So, it's certainly our intention to do it next week, and potentially the two weeks following, and potentially for a longer period of time. Another of the variables, obviously, the restaurants confront is staffing and food for outdoor tables which are weather-dependent. All it takes is a bad weather day to knock that part of the business out of your revenue column. So, more on that later. But anyway, anybody who has any comment about how that went, welcome to hear it. As you say, we're talking to everybody to try to make it the best thing it can be. So, back to COVID. The Westchester numbers are extremely good, and in fact, New York State is looking very good, looking very good relative to some other states. We've come through an extraordinarily difficult time, but it is clear, as the governor has made clear multiple times, that COVID is still out there, and we're not done. The more all of us are out in the world, as we are and are enjoying being so, the more we are mixing with other people in other places, the more likely it is that COVID is going to be floating around. And so, social distancing remains critically important. I would have to say shout-out to so many people who are being responsible about mask-wearing, and some regret at the fact that there are some people who are not being responsible about mask-wearing. Regardless of your opinion on all of this, every bit of evidence makes clear that folks wearing masks when they can't be more than six feet apart is a very, very beneficial thing in reducing the spread of COVID. So, it couldn't possibly be a higher goal for every one of us to sustain the progress we've made and to get back to normalcy as soon as we possibly can. And wearing a mask seems like a small price to pay to help make that happen. So, please, 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 wear masks. If you want to pay more attention to what exactly is permitted in each of these phases, and what would be permitted potentially two weeks from tomorrow if we enter Phase 4, you can go to forward.ny.gov. There's a very clear explanation there of what happens in each phase. Phase 4, potentially two weeks from now, or two weeks from tomorrow, if the metrics hold in our region, would also start to open up public entertainment and bigger gatherings.
Large venue gatherings, schools, churches.
Right. It remains a moment where we need to pay attention to social distancing. We need to pay attention to washing hands and making certain that we keep our guard up, because Westchester is doing great, which is the step towards victory that we all sought. That can't ever overcome the horror that something like 3,500 of our friends and neighbors in Westchester died, and there remain COVID-positive folks in hospitals right now. So, slightly scary to report, as perhaps you saw, that the initial reports that kids aren't affected have been a little bit modified with some strange syndromes that have shown up in small kids. And then the report that has been in the news in the last couple of days, especially from places like Florida, that folks in their twenties are starting to see some impacts in a demographic that was previously thought to be relatively resilient. So, obviously, more is known every day about this thing, but what is known for sure is that wearing a mask helps, and the longer we go with low infection rate, the fewer hosts we have for this virus, the sooner we get to the point where life starts to feel more normal. So, then I just also wanted to mention that the census is ongoing. We've talked about that before. Everybody will have received in the mail a postcard. If you didn't respond to the postcard, in an online or smartphone response, you got a paper census that you can fill out and mail back. Find either one of those if you haven't done it, and do it now, because August 11th will be the date when census workers start fanning out across Westchester and knocking on people's doors. So, a full count is enormously beneficial to this county. We've talked before about how much money was lost in federal aid that's distributed based on population because of what was almost certain, an undercount of as many as 100,000 people in Westchester 10 years ago. If we can overcome that this time, our future will look quite a bit brighter. So, if you haven't filled out the census, do it now. If you know someone who hasn't filled out the census, encourage them and encourage them vigorously to do it. And if anyone hasn't filled out the census within a few weeks, August 11th, someone's going to show up knocking on the door, which honestly, most people would rather not have happened. So, that's my report on the census. So, keep your eye out, dig through your mail, or just go to census.gov, and you can find a way to respond right then and there. Anybody else have reports, announcements, comments? Okay. All right. Let me share my screen, and we will go to the resolutions. All right, everybody see that?
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay, there we go. All right, Nicole, Resolution Number 122, which I will click into.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the Village Administrator to sign the license agreement with Westchester County for participation in the county hotline system, and the license agreement is attached.
Is there a second? Eric, you want to give the quick summary on this emergency thing?
Sure. So, this is the equivalent to what we like to call the Batphone. It resides in our meeting room on the second floor, which is also our emergency management room. It's a direct line to the Westchester County Police Department. Each municipality has offered this line, and we've taken advantage of that for quite some time. So, this is renewing that relationship and that license agreement.
And with, I gather, some new infrastructure the county has come up.
That's right, that's right.
So, all true, and we have called it the Batphone, but it isn't nearly as cool-looking as the Batphone was.
It's pretty boring looking.
Yeah, it looks like a kitchen phone from 1975.
I'm dating myself. The rest of you probably don't know what the Batphone looked like.
I know what the Batphone looks like.
All right.
Eric, does it go into the emergency management in Dahala or into the HQ near the Sawmill?
It's the, it's actually the EOC, well, the--
It does go into the EOC?
Yeah, in Hawthorne, actually, there--
Oh, at the one near the highway, okay.
Yeah, the THC, I think they call it, but--
Very good, thank you.
Just quite a setup over there, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, typo unresolved, just to mention.
All right, headed D.
We do thus resolve.
Exactly.
All right, 123, Steve.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees, based upon the recommendation of the Village Building Inspector, hereby deems the following escrow account to be closed and authorize remaining balances surrendered to the Village General Fund. Escrow account T0759, the account's name is Pleasantville Health Management, in the amount of $2,350.
Is there a second?
Second.
Closing out on ancient escrow.
That's right, trying to give money back to an applicant who has gone dark on us, predates the existing building inspector. Numerous attempts to get in touch with representatives were unsuccessful, so we'll return it to the general fund.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved, Joe, 124.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the Village Clerk to advertise for bids for two-year sidewalk repaving contract.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, every two years, we put out to bid a sidewalk and repaving contract based on cost per square foot, cubic foot, whatever it is, right? We come back with the bid, and then that is the supplier who supplies whatever we ask them to do at that rate per square foot. Questions, comments?
How long does it take us to get those bids in usually?
Well, probably, I would say, a month. We'll publicly notice them, give time for Q and A. I would say within three to four weeks.
Okay, cool.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. Come on, back to life, Novus, you can do it.
Do you want me to go ahead?
There we go, it responded finally. 125, David.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the minutes of the meetings held on June 8th, 2020, and June 15th, 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, as is the case in our Zoom world, we both have minutes that are a summary report, as they always are, but also a full or transcript that comes out of the Zoom system with every if, and, but, or um. Comments, questions, corrections to the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved, 126, back to Nicole.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following budget amendments as listed below. Budget transfers in the general fund, $4,820 from contingent to legal services contractual, $40 from contingent to farmers' market outside services, $35,675 from health insurance to unemployment insurance, for a total of $40,535. Budget transfers in the water fund, $990 from contingent to water taxes on village property.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, this is cleanup for the fiscal year that ended May 31, 2020. Any comments or questions?
Is that about it, you think, in terms of catch-up for the fiscal year, Eric?
That should, that should be it.
That should do it, right? Okay, good.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved, 127, Steve.
Steve, resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the abstract for payment of claims dated June 22nd, 2020, for fiscal year end 2020, covering check numbers 97571 to 97605, as listed below. From the general fund, $40,560.47. From the water fund, $1,931.85. From the refuse fund, $85.41. And from the trust fund, $3,002, for a total of $45,579.46.
Is there a second?
Second.
Again, cash disbursements associated with the fiscal year ended May 31. I just bring this up to show you what the attachment looks like. Anyone who's interested in line-by-line report of what we spend money on at each check register, you can zip into this PDF and get all the detail that might interest you. Comments or questions on 127? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved, 128, Joe.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the abstract for payment of claims dated June 22nd, 2020, for fiscal year 2021, covering check numbers 97570 and 97606 to 97647, as listed below. The general fund, $107,647.90. From the water fund, $35,781.30. From a refuse fund, $10,588.70, for a total of $154,017.27.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, again, the payment of claims is available here. How did we end up with this discontinuous check numbers? Does anyone happen to know?
What happened is, in the mix, we actually have some direct wire to the bank for credit card fees.
Yes.
So, they get processed, queued in the payment, so when it goes to run, it assigns the check number and the sequence. Where's the rest, or then run separate batch because they're physical checks?
Right. All right, not surprised that Noreen knows the answer, because she knows the answer to most things. Thank you, Noreen. Comments or questions on 128? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved, 129, David.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the closure of Wheeler Avenue from Manville Road to the exit of the Bedford Road parking lot on Saturdays, June 27th, July 4th, and July 11th, from 4:00 p.m. till 10:00 p.m., pending final approval by the police chief and village administrator. And further resolve that the police department is hereby authorized to post no parking signs and to tow all vehicles in violation of this temporary parking restriction.
Is there a second?
Second.
Was anybody towed this Saturday? No. Okay.
So, we had that big electronic sign out. That's a rental, right, Eric?
Right.
So, will we just keep that?
Well, yeah, we have a monthly rental, so we're good for this month. To purchase is about $15,000, so--
So, we had it for, we have it for a month, anyway. I was going to say, we could end up with a static sign with a changeable date. I could assist with that if that seemed better, but it's certainly prominent, and it worked, because nobody got stuck and got towed, which was, of course, our hope, so. All right, so as reported--
Oh, sorry, I was just curious, is there any news about whether Pub Street might participate this Saturday?
I've not heard. I have a call-in to them to find out how the evening went for them, but for a variety of reasons, they didn't think it was helpful to put tables out in the street. So, whether they will change their view of that, I don't know, stay tuned. I know at least one restaurant that didn't put tables in the street is thinking maybe they will. Again, it's a more complicated business decision than it may look from the outside looking in.
And one business that decided definitively not to participate, once they saw all the people there, dragged tables from inside out and did it anyway.
Yeah, well, I'm wondering if it might actually be easier for them once the indoor--
It might be, yeah.
--space opens, because they're going to have a larger staff to begin with.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's, as I mentioned before, nobody's quite sure how it's going to be, so--
Yeah.
This approval, was this approval from the building department, was it free, or was there a cost to it?
No, it's free, it's free.
They just have to do the permit.
But they have to provide an insurance--
That's right.
So, there is that, there is that issue.
If I could interject, too, I know one restaurant was hesitant to participate. The new executive order puts a lot of liability on restaurants to control their outdoor dining areas, and their SLA liquor license is kind of held over their heads. And so, they were very worried about, you know, things getting a bit out of hand and not wanting to take that risk, but--
Yeah, maybe we could try and, you know, through social media or whatever, get the message out again that it's happening, and also that it's important that people, like you said, Peter, eat and drink when they're sitting at a table, you know--
And follow the rules, right?
I mean, it's clear from the state guidelines, again, which have nothing to do with our rules, that there is a, this is not a bar scene in the street. This is a sitting-at-table scene in the street, and that's the requirement that the operators are expected to fulfill. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved, 130, which we have just added, and Eric can explain what it is. That's back to Nicole, right?
Right. Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the mayor to extend the revocable license agreement with Pleasantville Lofts LLC, approved via Resolution 202093 with regards to a portion of the Cooley Street Municipal Parking Lot adjacent to the development project at Seventy Memorial Plaza.
Is there a second?
Second.
Eric, you want to just fill folks in here?
Sure. So, back in, back in April, we authorized a license agreement with Seventy Memorial so they could store soil from their project site on the Cooley Street lot. They needed that space in order to avoid making hundreds of truck trips off-site to bring the soil. The soil will then have to be brought back onto the site after some of the foundation work is completed. So, you know, hundreds of truck trips have been avoided. Given the light use of the municipal parking lots, the Board decided that it was in the village's best interest to allow this. The license agreement runs through July 1st, so they have to make a request to extend that, which they did today. And they are hoping, they're actually ahead of schedule right now. They believe if they're allowed to keep storing the soil there, that they would, they would need it until about September. So, that is a new request that came in today. Again, the license agreement runs through July 1st, currently.
So, that would be a harder thing to say yes to in an environment where we had high demand for parking, but at the moment, I've been over there most every day, obviously given the current circumstances and the likelihood of their continuation through the summer, it seems okay to me.
Just curious what the status is on the plumbing or electrical work, or whatever's going on in front of, what's the name of that restaurant?
Mediterranean.
Mediterranean, yeah.
So, they're currently--
I'm watching a different subject, but I'm just--
That's a good question, because there's a lot of work going on back there. They've been doing stormwater work as well as water connections. Right now, they are expecting to be completed by the end of this week, pending, they have to get the health department out to take a look and inspect, inspect the project. So, they're, they believe by the beginning of-- of next week, they should have that all wrapped up, and then have, you know, fully reopen that area, that roadway over there. They've been working with Mediterranean as well. So they're adjusting their work schedule around when Mediterranean is open to give them some relief. And so they've been in close communication now.
Can Mediterranean use the street for allowing people to eat outside?
Yeah. So they've been, they've requested that. Robert has put them in touch with Seventy Memorial. They've actually asked for barriers to be put out there, which Seventy Memorial could absolutely accommodate. I don't know where the conversation stands, but I think Mediterranean is actually well-positioned, given that tomorrow they're going to be able to have the 50% occupancy. They have that nice open front that they can open. So I'm not sure if they took advantage of the construction barriers, but I know that chat was happening last week.
Thank you.
I went over there. There had been some comments by folks from Mediterranean on our Zoom call the week before last, when we were talking about the possibility of closing Wheeler and the like. And I went over there on Friday night, and things were much better over there. And it seems, as Eric already reported, I know Robert and Lyndon have been on it full-time, that there's a pretty good relationship going on over there between Mediterranean and the folks at Seventy Memorial and the team that's doing the work. So-- All right. Comments, questions beyond that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. So that's the end of our resolutions. We do have an executive session where we will sign off, and we can have a motion to go into that. But in the meantime, is there any further comment or new comments, or members of the public who are watching who want to ask a question? It's hard to find here in the long list of other questions. I do not see a new question unrelated to the pool to begin with.
No.
So two things, just go ahead. Somebody say--
No, I was just saying, no, not yet. No new question.
So two things to remind folks of, and we'll blast this out. I offered to have a town hall Zoom meeting about our decision to close the pool on Thursday night. And obviously, all of you, my colleagues, are welcome and encouraged to participate if that works for you or not. But I think we should notice that as a board meeting, and all five of us can participate if we're so inclined. If you're not available, I'm happy to do it, and I'll, again, save the discussion and clue you all in.
Yeah, just to put that out there, I have a FEMA call on Thursday night, so I'm not going to be able to attend that. I would love to, but it's hard to get out of the other call.
All right.
Are you going to discuss other issues with the pool, other than why we didn't open the pool this season?
My intention for that meeting was to talk, only to allow folks who are very unhappy with our decision to close, to have a chance to talk to me and us to express their views. I mean, I was clear, I think, in the outset, that I don't think we are inclined to change that decision. We've got an opportunity to hear what people have to say, and I'll share with all of you, any of you who can attend. But then I also think we should schedule, and we don't have to do it right now, a follow-up Zoom meeting specific to the discussion about the future.
Yep. That's another, that's a whole process, right? That's going to be more than a couple more calls, I think. We look back what we did for the civic space planning.
Right.
We had public engagement after public engagement to really get a sense of what people wanted, right? We'll have to do that, too, if we head down this road.
Yeah. We'll get Lori Shea, Chair of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, and all of the folks on CRAB in the mix to help lead that process as well. So again, a lot to be done. So if there's any--
Let's look at the calendars next, you know, Thursday night. I'm thinking the following week.
Okay. And I think best to do it on a night not attached to a board meeting.
Yeah.
So it can go on as long as it needs to go on. All right. There being no further new business, is there a motion to go into executive session on matters of personnel?
So moved.
Second. We need a second.
Does it mean we don't have to have the session if we don't have a second?
People lose that one, Vinjamori.
Wait, I'm sorry. One quick question, because I was distracted. For Thursday night, did we have a time?
What time do you think? I was thinking 7:30 or something.
How about eight?
Eight. Eight it is. All right. So I'll talk to you, Noreen, tomorrow, and we can blast that out for 8:00 PM on next Thursday night.
Okay.
All right. This coming Thursday, that is.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, is that next Thursday or this Thursday?
This coming Thursday. Okay. So again, did we get a second on our motion to adjourn into executive session?
A second.
Okay, we got it. All right. So--
We have to vote?
This is our last meeting in the month of June. Our next meeting is the second Monday in July. That's Monday, July 13. As you just heard, we're going to have a couple of sessions related to the pool before that. But otherwise, we look forward to seeing you for our next regular meeting on Monday, July 13. Thank you and good night. Board members, the call-in for the executive session was sent by email.
Peter, I think we have to vote on the resolution. We moved it in, we seconded it, but I don't think we voted.
You're right. So we're not actually in executive session.
Not yet.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Even Vinjamori voted aye, even though he was not wanting to second. All right. Will we convene on the conference call in a moment? Thank you. Thank you, Noreen. Thank you, Eric.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks.